Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Lancaster's Lancaster County Board of Commissioners Budget Meeting for Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. Mr. Clerk, please begin. Well, I'll do the introductions here since we're taking this meeting first. I am Chair of the Board, Rick Vest. To my left is Vice Chair of the Board, Commissioner Deb Shore. To her left is Commissioner Sean Flowerday. To my right is Commissioner Roma Amundson, and to her right is Commissioner Kristi Yocum. Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Mr. Clerk, please begin the meeting.
The copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to discuss today's open meeting is available from the, for electronic viewing from the county clerk staff. Printing options are available on request. These materials can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda I and I'm one is a public hearing. This is Lancaster County's proposed budget for fiscal year 2021-22. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. All right. Dennis Meyer, Lancaster County Budget and Fiscal Officer. Today, we're going to talk about the proposed budget. So, a couple, couple places I will go out today is, is based off the agenda. There's, under the proposed budget, it goes out to this information. And then the next place I'll, I'll go out is just kind of quick show everybody what's out in the transparency portal so that, no matter if you're here or sitting at home or whatever, you can go out there, you can kind of see all the numbers that, that we're talking about today. So, today, we're going to talk about the proposed budget. The proposed budget that was filed by July 31st, the, the property tax rate that was used was 26.4076. That is actually a 1.75 cent decrease from the previous fiscal year. So, that number was built off of a 10% projected valuation increase. And that's kind of what the numbers in the proposed budget are. Now, a little bit later on, we'll kind of talk about where that valuation went, what's that done, and then what we're going to do with that. But let's right now just kind of go over that proposed budget that we've got. The one item that I want to throw out there to remind everybody that this budget does include approximately $62 million worth of, what I will refer to as ARPA money. It's really American Rescue Plan Act funding. That comes into play here, and that's what will drive a lot of our numbers. So when we get into the proposed budget of expenditures for, for the county overall, you will see that we're at about a $246.4 million proposed budget number. That is actually a 22.05% increase in comparison to the budget from the previous year. So what we have to remember here is, as I've already mentioned, we're trying to reduce the levy, but our budget is also growing by 22%. So the majority of that is kind of dealing with the federal money that has, that has kind of been brought into the budget. So, on here, it kind of shows you four of our federal programs that, that's kind of driving it. I mentioned ARPA is a $62 million budget. We do not plan to spend that all this fiscal year, so we've got about $20 million into expenditures for that side. We've got about $4 million in CARESAC money that, that we're pushing out there. The City of Lincoln still is owed some disaster relief money. The way it is set up is disaster relief money all runs through the emergency management of Lancaster County, and then it's kicked out. So we would receive it, then we'd pay it out to the city. So that's why it hits our total budget of expenditures. And then we're also dealing with the Emergency RML Assistance Program that's out there. And, and between those two programs, we've got about $1.6 million out there. The largest portion of Lancaster County's budget is really for salaries and benefits. It's at about a 35% number. When you look at that compared to last year, you will see some of those numbers have decreased because we've dumped so much other ARPA money in there, it just pushes those percentages down. Usually last year, I think, I think we were talking 42 to 44% was salaries and benefits. The three largest departments that the county has, county engineer is at about 32.8 million. Corrections Department is about 29.4, and then the sheriff is about 15.1. So, wh- when, when we look at how we set those up by functions, you will see that public safety, which includes law enforcement and other, is about 42.4% of our budget. So that includes the, you know, corrections, the sheriff, are you services on the public safety other? That's where you get into the courts, the county attorney, public defender, items such as that. So, that, that's our biggest piece. General government is second. And what drives that a lot is the transferring of money. When we transfer out to the county engineer or we transfer to the countywide sinking fund, those are all part of that. So that drives that percentage up. And then this year, Health and Human Services has slid into the third largest function at 13.75%. So it's kind of jumped Public Works by a little bit. It's all because that ARPA money is sitting there. So, this year, it's just a little bit different looking than, than what it has been the last few years. General Fund. General Fund's at about $128.5 million. That's about a 4.18% increase over the previous year. Most of what's driving our, our general fund increases really comes down to salary and benefits. The county engineer's office did reorganization and moved employees from other funds into the general fund. So that's kind of driven it up a little bit. And then, you know, just increases in salaries and benefits kind of play into that as well as some new FTEs. Budget of revenues. Taxes are our largest source. So property tax really, you know, most of the decisions that the county board makes really affects the property tax side. We don't have a whole lot of other revenue that comes in to help offset that. We do have a little bit of motor vehicle tax, and, and we do have some inheritance tax that comes in. And here in Lancaster County, we do deposit our inheritance tax into the general fund, and we utilize it just, I mean, just for property tax relief. We, we throw it all in there. We use it each year. That helps us keep the levy at where we need it to be. Intergovernmental revenues this year has jumped to our second one over charges for services and fees. Again, it's that federal money that we're bringing in this year that's kind of skewing some of those numbers there. So, couple, couple other items that's, that's coming into play for this budget this year is, our, our general fund balance actually increased by about $8.2 million in comparison to the previous year. So, so we're really taking that into effect also as we're trying to, to balance the budget out. So, last year, you know, the, the pandemic really slowed our expenditure growth. Now, we had all the salaries and benefits that, that we always normally do, but some of the legal costs, you know, stuff to deal with the courts because the courts kind of shut down for a while, it kind of just slowed everything down. Some of our capital outlay items weren't purchased, and so through that process, our, our budget increased by eight point, or our fund balance increased by 8.2 million. So that's another reason that we were able to look at our property tax and really make that decision to drive the levy down by this, by the 1.75 cents. Another thing that we were able to do with that taking place too is we were able to look at our cash reserve. And if you have, if you've attended any other budget hearings over the years, cash reserves has been an issue for Lancaster County. We're trying to take care of it, and this year, we're able to, to help move us in the right direction, keep moving us there. You know, our, our general fund cash reserve amount this year will now be $16.6 million, which is an increase of about 6.4 million. So, we're always shooting to get to about a 16.67% number, which is about two months' worth of expenditures. This will get us to about 12.97. So, still not there, but we're taking a decent increase to get us there in a lot better shape. The one thing that cash reserve does for us, because we, because we live so much off of the property tax side, property tax only comes in really two times during the fiscal year. So, between August and September till almost March, we don't have a whole lot of property tax coming in. So we've got to have a cash reserve sitting there so that we can keep covering expenses until we get that next payment of property taxes coming in. That's why it's, it's a huge issue for us. FTEs. For the 22 budget, the FTE count now is 896, full-time equivalents. So, the FTEs are increasing really by about 10 positions since last fiscal year. Some took place during mid-year, and then others took place during our budget discussion that we've been doing. I've kind of listed them out here. You know, we, we've got a mental health clinician and tech support out at Corrections, a couple county attorneys, a title inspector and deputy sheriff for the Sheriff's Department. Public Defender's Office has an attorney and a social worker, two drug screening techs for our community corrections. And then with this ARPA funding that has come in, we've hired a grant coordinator to, to handle that. So again, when I, when I show you and talk to you about our three largest department employee-wise, it's really the same three departments that we talked about expenditure-wise. Corrections, sheriff, and the county engineer's office. We've, we've already talked about what we're doing with the tax levy. I'm going to, I'm going to go back, I'm going to jump out under the Lancaster County Budget Reports on the agenda. And this will, this will take us out to the transparency portal. This is all out on Lancaster County's website under the Budget and Fiscal Office. You have the ability to go out there and take a look at all of the numbers out there that you want to. As, as the report that I'm on right now, this will show you on the expenses. Here's the $246.4 million number, and then you have the ability to just drill down as far as you want to get. As, as much detail as you would like. On the transparency report is the overall county budget. The next report that I've got on there deals with just the general fund. And under these, if you scroll down, you can actually see a bunch of different views that I've got set up. So, this shows you general fund and grand total, but if you wanted to see what falls under Public Safety Other, you can click down to that other view, and then you can kind of see who, who we've got placed there. The county attorney, public defender, the courts. It kind of goes over what I've kind of talked about here. But it, it allows you to get down into those budget numbers to, to see basically every number that, that we're working with here. I'm going to go back up to, talk about, and then I've also then started a couple monthly budget to actual reports so that as the county kind of moves on, you will see off to the right-hand side, budget numbers, and then you will see July numbers getting posted, August numbers getting posted. It will just carry out every month so that you can track where we're at on our budget at, at the same time that we're tracking it. So, so that information is all out there. I've also put out a list of our tax levy over the last seven or eight years, so you can see that. I've also got a list of all the FTEs by departments that you can kind of track there to kind of see where those are at. And then the other ones underneath there is really all the department budget hearings that we had. So, every time we had those department budget hearings, we put those out on the portal. Now, everything above that is now us taking those numbers and putting it into our budget document. So, the, the last thing that, that I just want to talk about is the difference in valuation that came in versus what we set up our proposed budget. And, and kind of how we're, how we're setting that up for this next budget year. So I projected 10%. The valuation came in at 11.08%. With the levy being at the 26.4076, that would bring in an additional 833,605. So, we've talked about this, and at this point in time, the, the plan is, because we understand we've got pri- we've got some projects out there that this budget doesn't fund at this point in time. You know, there, there is no doubt that every year, we understand we can't fund everything. We've got to come up with what are our priorities? Where do we want to be at property tax-wise? And then we make the decision on there, and we do it on an annual basis. And every year, it seems like I'm up here, our priorities are different every year based off of just what's going on. So, so the plan right now is to take that 833,605 and put it into the countywide sinking fund. We're, we're using the countywide sinking fund for a few different projects right now. The SEJIS project, which is a criminal justice information system project, is a huge project for us. And the technology with that project is really outdated, and we're, and we're just starting to go through kind of rewriting that. You know, that, that's, that to us is about a $4 million project. That's what that sinking fund is set up for. You know, put money aside so that we can get it, so that we can fund those projects. Another project that we have slid money aside for this year is we have moved a million dollars into the countywide sinking fund for the 68th Street project. We know we can't fund that whole project this year, so we've set a million aside so that we can, we can kind of match that again next year so that we can move, so that we know that's, that's the project that, that we're shooting for, for the next fiscal year. This 833 would then be moved into there, and then the county board, as we go throughout the fiscal year, we know we've got projects out there that we're going to need to talk about, but we don't have them on a priority list. This will allow the county board to have those discussions, and then we can make that decision on what's priority number one at that point in time. So, that is, that is the plan to, to kind of finish up the budget. And when we talk about the adoption of the budget, the next meeting, that will kind of be part of that discussion. Questions?
We've, we've spent an enormous amount of time with you, Dennis, and with others, working out the details of this, you know, enormously important budget. And I just want to commend you once again for your just faithful leadership in helping us examine all the issues that are before us, getting them into an understandable format, and allowing us to, as you say, make those decisions because we can't fund everything year after year. That's, that's been true, so.
Right. And, and the thing is, like I've been trying to, to say today is, this budget is so different than, than any of the other 14 budgets that I've done. You know, we've never had $62 million coming to us from the federal government. You know, we've never had valuation increases of 11%. So, so a lot of that, you have to, you kind of have to weigh on what's priorities, what do we need to get done, but also take all that into effect because the ARPA money can only be used for certain things. So it's, it's not like we can just bring that in and spread it across as property tax relief and stuff like that. And that's why with our ARPA funding, we will, we will constantly be back at staff meetings and at Tuesday meetings as we're, you know, finalizing and figuring out what, what are we all doing with that. So, the ARPA side of things is, yes, we need to have the spending authority, but we're still at, we're still really at the beginning stages of it as, as we're trying to figure out what, you know, what can we do and what are we going to do?
Yeah. It's just not free-range funding to use however we see fit.
Correct.
Any other questions for Dennis? We've, we've covered this road very thoroughly, so thank you, Dennis, for your, your presence here this morning. We would continue the public hearing. Is there anyone else here who would like to comment on the Lancaster County budget for the upcoming year?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I feel as Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, I feel as county engineer that I would be remiss in not stepping forward and discussing that, once again, this budget does not meet the needs of my department. We still have 28 miles of gravel road that, in these current conditions, are very dusty and dramatically in need of pavement. In addition, we know that South 68th Street, 148th Street, and Saltello Road all need improvements in order to handle the amount of current traffic that they have. Also, we have a bridge issue. We currently have 26 bridges in Lancaster County that are rated poor. That means they can no longer be repaired. They need to be replaced. And we have a pipe culvert issue with nearly one-third of our 7,000 pipe inventory needing, needing replacement. What I would humbly ask the board today is if instead of putting money for South 68th Street and cash reserves, if we could pull that money back and put it actually into the engineer's budget so that we could focus on the remainder of our closed bridges in Lancaster County. As I stated to you in my budget hearing, we have approximately $10 million worth of bridge construction that should we be funded. We are prepared to build those bridges. I have been in contact with Senator Fisher's office. They have informed me that in the future, we can, with the, if the transportation bill passes, we can expect our buyback money to double for the next five years. However, that looks like it would only be about $6,000 or $700,000 to us in the end. So, the county engineer's office still has dramatic unfunded needs. In addition, I would once again ask the commissioners to, to consider in the future when we do have FEMA emergencies and flooding emergencies, that the county engineer's office be allowed to use the cash reserves as only last week have I received the last of the 2015 flood reimbursements. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on the Lancaster County budget? Okay. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing on the, the county budget.
More motion at this time?
Yeah. We'll close this meeting.
I will move we adopt Lancaster County's proposed.
No, no. We're just adjourning the public hearing.
During the public hearing, it's different.
Then it's on the new business.
It's on the new business. Okay. I'll wait with my motion.
Sorry about that. So we do need a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the budget meeting this morning. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, we are adjourned. Now, I will open the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. Given that I've already introduced us and we've said the pledge, Mr. Clerk, would you please open the meeting?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to discuss today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk staff. Printing options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda I and I'm one are minutes. One A is approved of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, August 17th, 2021.
Move approval. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from Tuesday, August 17th, 2021. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is approved of the minutes of the Deputy Chief Administrative Officers interviews held on Tuesday, August 17th, 2021.
Move approval. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the interviews held last Tuesday. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number two, Claims. Approval of all claims processed through August 24th, 2021.
Move approval. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims. Please call the roll, Dan.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number three, Special Presentations. Three A is Commissioner's Award of Excellence for August 2021 to Becky Hite-Moravich, Election Commissioner in the category of productivity.
Yeah, Dan, Dan, or Dave and Becky have come up. Dan, do you have the proclamation before?
I do. Would you like me to read that?
Please.
Becky Hite-Moravich has been selected as the Commissioner's Award of Excellence winner for August 2021. Becky works as an Administrative Services Officer and began working for the county in December 19th, 2002. She was nominated by Dave Shively, Election Commissioner, in the category of productivity. In his nomination, Mr. Shively states, Becky Hite-Moravich, Administrative Services Officer, has been with Lancaster County Election Commissioner since December of 2002. She is in the process of ending her career with Lancaster County and will be officially retiring soon. retiring soon. Over the years, Becky continually found ways to make the election office more efficient. As early voting by mail started to increase, Becky found ways to accomplish the production of early vote by mail that saved both time and money. The most recent example was from the two thousand twenty-one Lincoln City elections. We had over forty thousand requests for early vote ballots for both the city primary and the city general election. Most of the requests were both the primary and general elections. During previous city elections, we would have to enter each request twice, one for the city primary election and one for the city general election. With only four weeks between the city primary election and city general election, time was a minimum. Becky worked with the election systems and software, the vendor for our voter registration system, to see if there was a way to copy the primary election early vote requests, the general election early vote requests. Becky and her staff from ESS repeatedly tested this possibility in the voter registration training environment, and they found a way to do this. The cost to election commissioner to achieve this was under four hundred dollars, and this eliminated well over five hundred staff hours, which would have also included overtime. During election cycles, Becky was always the first to arrive in the morning and the last to leave at night. Becky told me that she wanted to make sure everything was ready when staff arrived, so they could immediately start their workday. Becky was also responsible for keeping our office and our polling places safe during the pandemic. She worked exhaustively with the health department, purchasing, and Nebraska Secretary of State to find all the necessary protective gear and sanitary, sanitary supplies that were needed to keep our staff, poll workers, and the public safe. I personally could not think of a person more deserving of this award.
Well, Becky only, Becky is, is, is on vacation right now, completing her, her services in Lancaster County. So, uh, we, Becky started in two thousand and two. We had a thirty-year staff member that had been in that position prior to that, and Becky's now been there for, what, eighteen years? So, nineteen years? So, uh, it just, uh, we can't, uh, appreciate, I appreciate so much what she's done for us over the years, and, uh, really appreciate, uh, the board, um, presenting her with this award as well. So, thank you.
Becky, one of the cornerstones of our society is the ability of people to come and vote and determine who their leaders are going to be in the work of all of you out there, is greatly appreciated by the board. But during this past election cycle, it's been especially challenging, and we appreciate you stepping up and ensuring that Lancaster County lived up to its responsibility to the voters. And this is vacation, by the way, come with that. Anyway, on behalf of the board, I do thank you, and we appreciate you deeply, all in debt.
You so much.
Thank you.
Well, Becky, you and I started the same year, and so, I want to thank you for those many years of service. The nomination talked about your dedication to your fellow staff members and, and that team. But I also know, while it's Dave's name on, in the door, in the stationery, and all of that, you're the one that takes all the questions. You're that front face, you're answering the phones, uh, you're working with the candidates, you're working with the people that are working on the, the ballot initiatives, and you are just that, um, knowledge base, and you will be greatly missed, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess I would really like to say thank you, too, because I know that when I would come into the office and everything, you'd be right there on that desk, and we'd sit down and we would just converse. And we had a great time. Really appreciate all the work that you have done.
Thank you.
You're a great person. Thank you.
You've been one of the people that's kept democracy rolling in our town. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I just have to echo that your name is one name that I knew, because my mom has been a longtime poll worker, and she would talk about you frequently, about the support and, and all of that, and I appreciate all the work that you've done.
Thank you much. I couldn't do it without him and your crew.
Good people.
Thank you.
Good people.
Moving on, Dave.
Next are certificates of appreciation to the following temporary staff at the election commissioner. Sherri Lightner for twenty-one years of service, Pam Laquinta for seventeen years, and Roy Bartels for seventeen years of service.
Thank you. Before I go on with the certificates, I also, our other staff are here today as well, Billy Hawkins, Raisin Ann Billy, Marilyn Olson, Brian Cruz, and Sandy Albert. So, I just want to make sure that our, our full-time staff here was recognized as well. We had a very busy, busy last two years, so, anyway. Another thing that I, I really wanted to recognize is, is, you know, as much as our permanent staff does a lot of work throughout the year, when we get closer to elections, we have to have temporary staff that come in and assist us. We just couldn't get the work done, and we've had a number of staff that have worked a number of years in our office that come in when we need them. A lot of times, they come in, and if we don't have much to do, they're gone, but then they come back the next day, if we have more work to do, just all depending on it. So, I have three temporary staff members here that I'd like to recognize, and the first one is Sherri Lightner. If Sherri would come up. Our first certificate goes to Sherri Lightner, who has been a temporary staff member for twenty-one years. Sherri started shortly before the two thousand general election. Sherri had been visiting with another temporary staff member at the time and asked how she could get involved, uh, so she reached out to our office manager at the time and was immediately hired. Uh, since time was of the essence with only a few days until the general election, Sherri got her feet wet very quickly, didn't you, Sherri? Yes. Uh, checking in early vote ballots, answering the phone. Sherri told me the other day that the very first day she started answering the phone, right?
That's right.
You said that Dee, Dee said-
About a half hour.
About a half hour, she says, are you comfortable answering the phone? So, anyway, so, but you always heard, Sherri was on the phone frequently, and I always was very good at answering questions for voters during elections, and we've been very fortunate to have Sherri, um, in, uh, as a temporary staff member for twenty-one years. And so, Sherri, we appreciate your, your hard work. Thank you so much.
It's just been a, a great time, worked with some great people, and, uh-
Unknown caller. All love what we do.
There seems to be an oxymoron between temporary and twenty-one years. It just, you know, it seems, it seems a little strange.
Not there every day, but yes, I understand.
We appreciate your dedication.
Um, our next recipient of a certificate is Pam Iacquinta. Pam started working as a temporary, in our office as a temporary employee in two thousand and four, so she's been there seventeen years. She had been a past president of the League of Women Voters, and had worked with us in that position. Pam assisted us in, in several different areas. She helped in her early vote applications, voter registrations, as well as check-in early vote ballots. She also filled in a few weeks as the election board coordinator one year, when one of our staff members was ill. However, probably many in-person early voters will recognize Pam, as she spent several years working at the front line, assisting voters with in-person early voting, uh, and this was probably the most challenging this last year during COVID. And so, again, we're very fortunate to have Pam as a part of our team, so Pam, thank you.
I'd like to thank Becky and Dave, and all the other temporary staff, uh, who I've worked with through the years. We've had a lot of good laughs and fun, and one thing that Dave failed to mention is that, um, I am his nemesis as far as pranks, so you can, you can, you can talk to him about some of those pranks. At, at your leisure.
I don't wear my high V hat today.
All right. Anyway, it's been a lot of fun. Not sure if I have many more years left in me, we'll see about that, but I, I appreciate the recognition.
I'm making a note to contact Pam later.
Our next one goes to Roy Bartels, and Roy also started, um, as a temporary employee in our office in two thousand and four. He started assisting us in printing of our early vote ballots, our ballot-on-demand program, our old program that we did. We, we had to print one at a time, and Roy worked in that, 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 that room at the time. He was a retired school computer science teacher in Lincoln Public Schools, so when that, when we got the express votes, our, the Otto Marks came in, and my first thought was that Roy would be a good person to help us with that. And so, that's kind of been Roy's job since two, uh, two thousand and six. He, uh, main job, he's done other stuff for us as well, but he gets the, he got the Otto Marks all ready when they first came in, and now, of course, we're with the express votes. But he, uh, quickly learned, um, and those are machines that the voters with disabilities use, uh, and Roy quickly learned all about the Otto Marks, and now he's learned about the express votes. So, before every early, every election, Roy sets up each of the, each of the means, each of those machines for each polling site, tests them and makes sure that they are ready to be used in each precinct. He has also been a part of our election board worker training, instructs the election board workers on the proper setup and use of those, uh, express votes. He also works as an express vote technician on election day, and he has assisted us with the tabulation of votes on election night, so he helps us count the ballots on election night. So, he continues to be an integral part of our election staff, so Roy.
It's been very enjoyable working at the election office. It's great to work with people who are of one mind, and that is to help the citizenry of Lancaster County to participate in our representative democracy.
Amen.
Thank you so much.
Next is a certificate of appreciation to Mary Bolshalt, ten-year president and volunteer coordinator of the City of Lincoln, Lancaster County League of Women Voters.
Come here, you want to come on? We work closely with the League of Women Voters, uh, as well as, you know, we have a contract with the league. You guys approve that every couple of years, and, uh, if it wasn't for the league, we, they help us with voter registration and do so many other things, but, so we'd like to recognize Mary Bolshalt for her commitment, dedication to the election commission office, and to the League of, uh, Lincoln, Lancaster County League of Women Voters. Mary has volunteered as president of, of the league for the last ten years. She has served as the voter services, as voters, for services for the league since two thousand and eight, has worked in partnership with our office for thirteen years to make voter registration process more convenient to the citizens of Lancaster County. Uh, she has demonstrated a passion for public service and is dedicated professional. She has contributed ideas, coordinated deputy registrar trainings, and organized volunteers for outside voter registration and drop box carriers. Mary has attended events along with the election office to register voters and provide voter education. Her work is truly appreciated, not just by the election office, but also, uh, those organizations we work so closely with. So, Mary, thank you so very much for your, your help for us, and we appreciate everything that you've done for us.
Of course, I can't pass up an opportunity to talk to a public body after all my years in public service. It reminded me of doing county budgets when I was the assistant director at the county welfare office, which was a very long time ago, so, but I'm not telling how old I am. But it's so interesting, the technology that you have available. Now, we had paper and calculators pretty much then, so, a few spreadsheets. But on behalf of the league, I want to thank, um, the county board, and we are so pleased to be able to work with the election commission, because in some states, it's a very contentious relationship. And ours is very positive, cooperative, and, to use a well-worn phrase, collaborative, that we can work together to do things. I've organized volunteers and done hundreds of voter registrations at high schools, grocery stores, naturalization ceremonies, and also provided voter education sessions on ballot issues, as well as voting processes for new voters. I want to thank the county board and Dave for supporting the ten drop boxes added. A special thanks goes to Maura Kelly for developing a safe and secure way to deliver and retrieve the drop boxes from the ten locations. I was fortunate to be able to test the plan with Maura. That was an adventure, that first day we went out, I'll tell you. But, and offer ideas on sequencing and timing for the drop box pickup and deliveries. Our volunteers were excited to do it, and, um, they continued to report back that the people in the libraries and the people using the drop boxes so much appreciated them being available and accessible. It helped keep voting available and safe during the pandemic. So, I thank you for the recognition, and thanks to Dave and Maura for all the, all the help they've given me, teaching me how to do this job, after the other jobs I've had. Thank you.
Well, Mary, before you go, I just, I feel so compelled to express gratitude towards you. We've talked about how important, uh, the ability to have access to voting is, and you talked about the program you helped develop in the libraries, and making it safe and accessible. And it just is what we hear repeatedly, is we're very fortunate to have the leadership of Dave, but we've just got great people, great vol, great staff, and great volunteers, and great commitment from the community to make this process exactly what it ought to be in our country. So, thank you so much for all you've contributed over these many years.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a number of members who will also work in the election office, whether they're on counting boards, or canvassing, doing all kinds of things, so, and they all love doing that. So, they're pleased, and they found a way to get there during the pandemic. A few of them were a little leery of going out much, but, many of our members are older, but they are quite committed and dedicated to this purpose.
It takes a village, it really does. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more time.
Next is number four, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one. With a single vote of the Board of Commissioners, these items are approval of right-of-way contracts with the following. Mark W. Manilli, revocable trust, and Stacy A. Manilli, revocable trust, South One Hundred and Tenth Street and Woodstock Road, in amount of two thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars. Warren D. and Melanie M. Chaney, South One Hundred and Tenth Street and Woodstock Road, in amount of two thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars. Bertha Neaton-Sine Family Trust, West Adams Street and Northwest One Hundred and Forty Street, in amount of one thousand one hundred and two dollars. Robert A. Yandras, South One Hundred and Tenth Street and Sage Coach Road, in amount of six hundred and eighty-three dollars. Amendments to the following contracts. C- eighteen dash five forty-six with Leeds Online LLC for Leeds Online Power Plus Software. C- nineteen dash six forty-five with Sap Brothers Inc. for annual supply lubricants. C- twenty dash five eighty with Paramount Linen and Uniform Rental for annual service, rental, and cleaning of mats and various linens and related items. C- eighteen dash five forty-eight with Garcia Chacon Enterprises, Inc. for on-call guardrail repair and replacement services. C- twenty-one dash two thirty-four with WatchGuard Video for public safety video equipment. C- fifteen dash three one six with Legal Aid in Nebraska for legal services for the representation of indigent parents and juveniles in the separate juvenile court of Lancaster County. Grant contracts with the following. Lincoln Public Schools for the truancy diversion program. Clyde Malone Community Center for the Take Pause Program. And Omni and Ventive Care for the truancy diversion therapy program.
I move approval of the consent items?
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items, and we cannot discuss any of the items on the consent list individually unless we pull them off, but, uh, unless there's further discussion, I'll have Dan, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number five, new business. Five A is a special events permit application from Pink Gorilla Events for an event on September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
I'm Ben Kahoon with Pink Gorilla Events, and, uh, the special event is for the Market-to-Market Relay. So, it's an annual run from Omaha to Lincoln, and when we reach Lancaster County, we use the bike trails and head our way into Lincoln, and then go to Haymarket. So, I think you guys are pretty familiar with it. It's the fifteenth, oh, no, fourteenth year this year, um, and we've been working with the county since year one.
I do have a question, though. What is the background on the Pink Gorilla name?
Oh, yes. So, the, the event was started fourteen years ago. We had spent eighteen months planning it, um, and the night before the event, we said, how are we going to start, uh, this weird race where one person's running at all time, and, uh, it takes all day, and we decided that I owned a Pink Gorilla costume, and the person that started it with me owned a trombone, so, all of our races have started with a Pink Gorilla blowing a trombone out of the starting chute instead of the typical, uh, starter's pistol.
Okay. That explains it.
That, that helps, that reveals a lot, right there. Congratulations on so many successful events, and you, the requirements that have been set out, those are familiar to you.
Yes.
I assume they're the same.
Yep.
And it's a fun race to watch. My daughters run it several times, and just-
My daughters run it several times, and just how all the support team all arrives at the different drop-off points, and then you hop in your car and you drive it and get to the next one, and some of those elite runners are just unbelievable. I mean, they just... Your elite runners are finished in that course, and how long, your elite teams?
Like, seven hours. But it's unique in the sense that in like a typical running race, which we put on several typical running races, the elite runners start first, and in this race, the elite runners start last, so that we can keep people in Lancaster County in a five-hour window instead of like putting the elite runners first, and then it being like a 14-hour window difference between the first and the last team. So, you're right, that a normal runner would never realize how fast those people are, because typically, they're like gone, right? So...
They don't stop running when they pass the time. They just run right to the transport vehicle, and they're off.
Got to get moving when you're running five minutes, please.
It's a lot of fun. And a beautiful time of year to run across rural Lancaster County.
Yeah, for sure.
I would move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion, please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five B, the applicant has requested that that be held. C is appointment of Chrissy R. Bauer as the Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners at an annual salary of $95,500 effective September 9, 2021, with a salary increase of $5,000 after six months.
Move approval. Second.
I think we all want to make the motion.
Yeah, we're all...
On this one, so...
Multiple firsts and multiple seconds.
Yeah, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is a resolution, a matter of final allocation of levy authority to all political subdivisions subject to the Lancaster County levy authority.
Okay, I'm going to... I've made one change to this. I want to pass it out. Leslie should have the new package.
Thank you.
Okay, so, last Thursday, I told you I was going to do what I could to get this done this week to get it done, and of course, while I'm trying to get it done this week, one change had to get made. So, basically, what we're doing on this is we're allocating out the 15 cents. This resolution will show with these numbers that Lancaster County is in compliance with the 15 cents. The one change that I did have to make back there on the Waverly Fire District was just adjusting their general fund by less than 500 bucks. But I wanted to get it right, because that's what they'll be taking to their budget hearing and doing all of that. But once this is approved today, I'll send it off to the group, and then they can start doing their budget hearings, because they have to have their budgets filed, just like we do, by September 20. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. E is a resolution, a matter of exceeding the budget restricted funds limit for the 2020-21 fiscal year by an additional 1%.
Okay, so, this is our annual resolution that I bring forward for the budget purpose because of the LID calculation. The LID calculation says that it can grow by 2.5% plus any allowable growth, plus an additional 1% if the board votes on it. Now, this year, I think when I do the number, we might be able to get .03. I think the growth is like at 2.53%. I'm going to plug it in, because it gives us the ability to grow that much more. Now, what I remind everybody is, we already did our calculation, what we want property taxes to be and all of that. So we always jump through that before we come and talk about the LID. So sometimes people think, "Well, it's automatically going to raise property tax." It really doesn't here, because we do that calculation as we figure out the budget. I just want the base amount to be growing, because we don't know what next year will bring us. So that's what it's doing for us.
Yeah. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item E. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is a resolution, a matter of approving the Lancaster County budget for fiscal year 2021-22.
So, the resolution that is out there right now will be to adopt the budget, and then on the attachment A, it has the additional 833-605 on there. That has it being moved to the countywide sinking fund, and once this is adopted, I will then republish the numbers in the Journal Star, because it says if you change it, you can. You just have to publish within 20 days to show what's changed from what was proposed. So, that attachment A will be the numbers that I will then get into the Journal Star for republication.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Five G is a resolution, authorizing installation of traffic-controlled devices in Lancaster County.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. What I am requesting is the authorization to install a school bus ahead sign on Northwest 40th Street, just north of the intersection of Northwest 40th Street and West Agnew Road.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. H is a resolution, a matter of amending the policy governing expenditure of public funds for payment of reimbursement of actual and necessary expenses incurred by county-elected officials, appointed officials, employees, and volunteers.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. We've spent... We've had briefings on this and the changes proposed, and any other discussion, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. I is a contract with Grant Street Group for the Lancaster County online payment and point-of-sale processing.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item I. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
If I could, just express gratitude to Rachel and the whole team that she put together. That was a long process to investigate all those options and come up with a great solution and cost savings for the county.
K is a contract with Legrand Excavating to provide annual service, snow and ice removal for the city, county, and public building commission facilities.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Legrand Excavating. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K is a contract with Mr. Yards &amp; Moore LLC to provide annual service, snow and ice removal city, county, and public building commission facilities.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item K. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Best? Motion carries five to zero. L are agreements with the Nebraska Department of Transportation and OPPD for the closure of existing railroad crossings due to Lincoln-South Beltway construction. This includes 98th Street and Rockabye Road.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. What I'm bringing before you is two agreements that account for the relocation of 98th Street and approximately 98th and Rockabye associated with South Beltway construction. This will close two rail crossings, and so you may recall that we've really already said we're closing all of these in with the South Beltway agreement, and this is just the follow-up with the railroad.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve these agreements. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. M is an agreement with RW Engineering and Surveying, Inc. for professional engineering services for sanitary sewer improvements at the existing Waverly Maintenance Shop.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. RW Engineering is a small engineering company that recently moved to Lancaster County with the construction of South Beltway. This is an engineering contract to fix some of the sewer issues we have in the Waverly shop. In particular, our entire garage drains to a 55-gallon barrel. So whenever we wash our equipment during the winter to try to get the brine off of it, to extend the life of it, we have to continuously pump that barrel. If the barrel overflows, it goes into Waverly's sanitary sewer system, which fills their system with grit, which they don't really appreciate. They have threatened to revoke our ability to connect to their system, and so what this will do is design a grit tank and most likely a new sewer line from the building, because it is a very old cast iron pipe, and it's also a very small four-inch pipe, so it doesn't really meet the needs of the building.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item M. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. N is a contract with Cooper Appraisal Group for the appraisal of easement areas at Culver U-243 and Culver W-258 in amount of $6,400.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. I'd like to thank the county attorney's office on the quick turnaround for this agreement. This agreement is to do an appraisal of Pipe U-243 located at Southwest 128th and West Sprague, and W-258 located at Southwest 2nd and West Hallam Road.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. O is a professional services agreement with the Interspace Studios Limited on behalf of the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office for services related to renovation of space on the first floor of the property located at 575 South 10th Street.
We are still waiting on one piece of insurance for this agreement, so if you decide to approve, if you could approve it contingent on the receipt of that insurance verification, that'd be great.
I will move approval, contingent upon the receipt of the certification of insurance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. The sheriff is... Terry, did you have any comments you wanted to add?
I have any questions you might have.
I think we've discussed this before. I don't have anything. No one else? Okay, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. P is an agreement with Sherri Eggleston Photography for individual headshots for the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office, sworn employees, and on as-needed basis for new employees.
Terry Wagner, Lancaster County Sheriff. We've never had our photographs of our employees taken by professional photographer. We generally try to do it in-house. It's for our commissioned photos that you might... that everybody has, and so this is an effort to professionalize those, make sure they're all uniform in their appearance, and that's what it is.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item P. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Q is to be held. Next is number six, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on agenda, may do so at this time.
All right. Is anyone here to make a public comment on an item relating to county business but not on the agenda? Please come forward if you're here for public comment.
Okay. Just, I live on 98th Street, North 98th.
Could you give us your name, please?
Diane Hybrink. I live on North 98th Street. I think I visited with Rick recently, and I just would, you know, ask for some attention to be put into infrastructure in the county roads. We live on a very, very heavily traveled gravel road that's really causing some pretty big issues in our area. So, just anything you can do to look at some of those issues, maybe throw some funding behind some of those things. I don't believe our road is on any long-term road plan to be hard-surfaced or anything like that. I know the county is working on doing an experimental kind of treatment on this particular road. So, just looking for a little help, maybe for our neighborhood and our area, for maybe some infrastructure dollars.
Thank you for being here, Diane. We're not allowed... Well, we're run by attorneys, as a lot of things are, and we're not allowed to interact during public comment. Public hearings, yes, public comment, no. So, thank you for bringing this to the board's attention.
Thank you for your time.
It's a very worthwhile topic.
Yeah.
Anyone else here to make public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Next is announcements. The place of the regularly scheduled staff meeting, the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners, will hold a legislative retreat on Thursday, August 26, 2021, at 8:30 a.m. in the Lancaster County Sheriff's Training Rooms B and C. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next quarterly meeting on Tuesday, August 31, 2021, at 9 a.m., with the Board of Equalization immediately following in Room 112 of the County City Building. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, August 31, 2021, at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building regarding County Text Amendment Number 21005 to amend Article 14, Community Unit Plan, and Article 15, Additional Use Regulations of Lancaster County Zoning Regulations, and amend Chapter 2, Definitions of Lancaster County Subdivision Resolution to Allow for Solar Energy Conversion Systems and All Necessary Apportances Within an Outlet. County Commissioners can reach 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
I move adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll. Please call the roll.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
...